Thank you for viewing tonight's planning commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Okay, I think. I'm going to call the meeting to order at the City of Clear Lake Council Chambers on May 17, 2021. As a reminder, if you're on our Zoom meeting as a participant, please put yourself on mute unless you are speaking. We are currently live streaming this meeting on the city's YouTube channel and the Lake County PEG TV livestream YouTube channel. To begin, I'd like to call for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Williams. Vice Chair Coker.
Here.
Chair Davis.
Here.
And I believe Commissioner McCarrick is absent.
Thank you. So we're going to stand for the pledge allegiance. Robert.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to open our public hearing. Up is consideration of a conditional use permit application, CUP 11-20, 12-20, and 13-20, authorizing a cannabis business operation at 2560 Highway 53, and recommending approval of a company development agreement, DA 2021-03, to city council. If we can have our staff report.
I believe Susanna was going to give the presentation. Susanna, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
We'd like to do a quick clarification for the development agreement. It was originally noted as DA 2021-02, but it is corrected as DA 2021-03 is the correct number for a clarification. Susanna, go ahead and move forward with the PowerPoint or, sorry, presentation.
Okay, so I'll just give a brief overview and then Mark is available to go into detail and I need the environmental documentation and the applicants here as well to answer any kind of questions that come up. So the application involves processing cultivation and distribution. It proposes the installation of two new buildings back to back to appear as if they were one cohesive unit. And they're both prefab metal buildings. The cultivation was going to take place in the greenhouses that are located further set back from the street. And then the distribution and processing will mainly occur in the actual metal buildings. The city performed an initial environmental study, IS 2021-01, and prepared a mitigated negative declaration in order to address some of the potential impacts environmentally. It's located in an industrial zone, pretty close to a lot of other similar zones and parcels. A lot of them already have operational cannabis businesses as well. And Mark, do you want to go into the environmental details?
We can't hear anything.
Hello.
Thank you. So, starting over, the City of Clear Lake did an environmental initial study on the proposed project, which covers various uses or sections such as aesthetics, air quality, geology and soils, hydrology, water quality, hazardous materials. And throughout the initial study, there's various mitigation measures, including but not limited to... So air quality is generally the one that's most impacted is cannabis does create a unique odor. So there are mitigation measures in place to reduce those, such as... It's just like, you know, the applicant will have to submit an odor control plan that is in adherence with their city municipal code, obtain all applicable permits from, you know, the Lake County Air Quality Management District, and maintain state districts, use filtration systems, and other means to help minimize the odors. For geology and soils during construction, there is a lot of ground disturbance. So there's been mitigations implemented for erosion control measures and best management practices to help protect the water, local watershed from runoff and to keep all the runoff onsite. For aesthetics, lighting, lighting we've directed downwards and not to project beyond the property boundaries. So that would help reduce lighting during offset hours or during evening hours where passing motors or nearby parcels may see some lighting. But with, overall with all the incorporated mitigation measures, the city determined that the environment would have a less than potential impact with all the mitigation measures incorporated. And if there's any questions on the environmental analysis, I'd be more than happy to respond to those. Susanna, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I did want to clarify the clerical error in the DA that was previously circulated. And as it was read today, it was correct, in case anybody was confused. And then also clarify another question that was brought up about Dam Road that was mentioned in the staff report. And I'd like to also clarify that that was a clerical error.
Then how about the parking question that came up earlier today that we went over? So essentially with our code, it requires approximately one space per thousand square feet of cultivation area for parking. So that would round, you know, with the entire building itself, it would need approximately 60 plus or minus parking spaces. However, the applicant is, the operation will not be open to the public. And it's only going to have up to approximately 14 employees during peak season, harvest season. And the overall parking is 26 spaces, including one ADA. So he has more than doubled the amount actually needed for the 14 spaces. And then, and within our city municipal code, there is an exception that we're able to apply. And we're applying that since he's not open to the public, it won't be detrimental to the health and safety and welfare. And that he has more than enough adequate parking for his employees that he doesn't need to meet the minimum requirement. Was there anything else you'd like to add, Susanna?
No.
So if there's any questions, we're more than happy to address them or provide clarification. The applicant, Joey, is here as well, and he can provide clarification on the inner workings or the details of the overall operation itself.
Um, do you want to give us? Okay. So one of my questions is in here, you're stating there are 30 parking spaces, but change? Off-street parking is indicated on the site plan, 30 parking spaces are proposed onsite?
So yeah, there's, based on the site plan, there's 26 parking spaces proposed, and one of them is an ADA parking space.
Okay. And then there's four large truck ones as well? Is that what we're seeing?
That would be near the loading zone where, when necessary, there'd be trucks that would come and pick up the product and then deliver it to the, to the facilities that it's designated to go to.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and ask our other commissioners if they have any questions. Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you. I have a question about the parking. I understand an exception can be made for this particular operation. What happens in five years when it's a different operation and it is open to the public? How would parking be managed at that point in the future?
That's a, that's a good, excellent and valid question. So at that time, since it'd be a change of use, we would be able to reevaluate the intensity or reevaluate the use. And at that time, if the use does change, additional, additional parking may have to be upgraded and/or comply.
Super. Thank you. I also had a question about the aesthetics. I would love to have the applicant consider a new design to be a little more, less blocky. One of the buildings that I like on Highway 53 is not actually in the city of Clear Lake, but it's the transit building just south of, of the Walmart intersection. And I think that design is more in keeping with what we want to represent here in the county versus warehouse style building. So I would love to hear any open consideration for that topic.
If I could have you speak into the microphone so that the people on the Zoom and at home watching could hear you. And just a reminder for the commissioners to have everyone speak directly into their microphone. Thank you.
Please state your name, Joey.
We're not hearing the speaker.
Why don't you just have Joey sit down at the other seat over there by you, Mark?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
So that building design was just the first one we threw up. We're definitely open to changes to the way that it looks from the road. There was a lot of trees and stuff that I don't know if you got the clear picture of it, but we're definitely open for changes for the front of the building.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. I'm not sure how we take that, that into action and consideration for today's procedures, but I appreciate that you'd be willing to do that. Thank you.
Okay.
Alan, do you think it's possible where he can coordinate with our department in regards to the design of it? And until we can come to a solid agreement on the design?
Well, I mean, that's ultimately up to the commission. You could require that something come back to them, but if you're okay with staff taking that direction, we'd be happy to work with Mr. Gesserson and see if we could... we'd be happy to work with Mr. Gustafson and see if we could come up with some agreeable design elements that may break up the building a little bit. So the commissioner will just have to let us know if you want to just provide direction to staff or you want something to come back to you for review.
I'd like to see something come back for us to review.
Okay, if that's the case, I would recommend if, if there aren't other issues that you could go ahead and approve the use permits and recommendation of development agreement, and we can work with Mr. Gustafson. You know, there is still several parts in the process that are required for the council to approve the development agreement so far. So it's still going to be a couple of months before everything's clear. And I think within that time period, we could put some design elements together and bring that back to the commission for, for file approval.
Commissioner Wilson, did you have any other questions?
No, thank you very much.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you. Some of my questions have already been clarified, but I did have one question. Of that property, I can clearly see from the highway where the main building is going to go and then up slopes. Are the greenhouses going to be on the backside of that slope or will they be visible from Highway fifty-three?
You, you will not be able to see them from Highway fifty-three. If, once it goes like to that up slope, it goes down a little and then it's real flat for about six, seven acres. So there's plenty of room back there. So you can't see it from the highway, to answer your question.
That was the only question I had.
Okay.
Vice Chair Coker?
I have no questions at all.
Well, you've answered all of my questions that I had as well. So do we have any public comment on this?
I have not received any emailed comments. It looks like there's no hands raised on Zoom. Uh, I don't know if the senior planner or the assistant planner have received emails on this item. Um, and there are no audience members who wish to speak.
I haven't, excuse me, I have not received any emails or concerns regarding this project.
I received clarification requests just from commission members, but no public comment.
Okay, so we will end the public comment period on this item. And then I will ask the commissioners if they had any other further comments. If not, then we will go ahead and accept a motion on this. Commissioner Wilson, any last comments?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
No, thank you.
Vice Chair Coker?
No, thank you.
So if we're ready, we'll go ahead and accept a motion on item number one. As amended, so we can go ahead and allow for a review design to come back before the commission. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Clear Lake approving cannabis conditional use permits. UP eleven dash twenty cultivation, UP twelve dash twenty processing, UP thirteen dash twenty distribution, and cannabis business regulatory permit located at two five six zero, Highway fifty-three in the industrial cannabis business and land use designations, APN zero one zero, zero four eight, zero five zero.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Williams and a second by Vice Chair Coker. Adam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chair Coker?
Aye.
Chair Davis?
Yes. The motion passes. We now need a second motion to adopt PC twenty-one, excuse me, twenty twenty-one fourteen.
I'll make that motion. I make the motion to adopt the resolution of the planning commission of the City of Clear Lake, California, recommending the City Council adopt an ordinance approving the development agreement, DA two thousand and twenty-one dash zero three, for Joey Gustafus, Gus, sorry, Gustafson, for the property located at twenty twenty-five sixty Highway fifty-three, Clear Lake, California, APN zero one zero dash zero four eight dash zero five zero.
I second.
Can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chair Coker?
Aye.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Do we have any staff reports?
That item isn't on the agenda, Chair Davis. It's a special meeting, so we don't have, yeah.
I apologize. Thank you. So I guess we will adjourn then.
Thank you.
And thank all of you guys.
Thank you. Good night.